Okay, we're gonna call it to order? Since we're a forum. I didn't actually hear from anyone saying that they were not coming, so if someone... Are we missing? That's it? Oh, Jeremy. Jeremy's not here yet. So, maybe they'll show up, but that's okay, we'll start. Okay, additions or corrections to the agenda? I just wanted to, just my addition. Minutes, actually, the consent agenda has minutes of 12-4. Tara, we don't have those yet.
Yeah.
And so we won't...
But we didn't approve the minutes of 11-13.
Correct. Right, that's 11-13.
That's right.
So what I wanted to do was change the minutes in the consent agenda from the 12-4 minutes to the 11-13, which you have had for a couple of weeks now, at least, I think. That was our regular November meeting. So if that's okay with you, we'll do that under consent agenda. If anyone wants to pull that out, just let me know at that time.
And do we have 12-4? We don't have them yet?
We'll do 12-4 in January.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, we'll do 12-4 in January. That's fine.
So I'll get those and these out next week to everybody.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Anything else for additions or corrections to the agenda? Anything from you guys?
Well, I do want to confirm, we do have tentative agreement to ratify.
Okay, so that is on the agenda under number 10.
Normally concluded during executive session, so you have an opportunity to ask questions about it.
And we'll do it at the end. I guess I should also mention, I'll just add it quick, under new business. I got a phone call from Sullivan Empowers Auditors, and I'll just give you a real quick update on that. They called me this morning, so I'll just fill you in under new business. No big deal. Okay, members of the public, we don't have any. If they come, we'll go to them. Correspondents? Is there any, no correspondents?
None.
Okay. Administrative report. That's you, Dren first. And thank you for the updated rationale. We all got it, everybody got it, right?
Yeah.
Including the recommendations from the school board, which was great. Thank you for doing that.
Happy to. My principal's report is the same as my presentation only a week ago, so maybe we just take this opportunity for questions. Nothing has changed in terms of what I proposed. I think there's direct connections with our immediate school board goals, as well as our Title I plan and preparation for students into the 21st century, which we're already in. I mean, there's things that I can tell you about what's happening in school, but it's not a part of the report.
Any questions, comments? Anybody want to say anything about the updated, revised rationale that came out?
I thought you did a good job with time and the goals, and, you know, talking about giving it some direction right up front. It's kind of what I expected to see, and I read it, and I was like, wow, perfect.
Leading.
That was a good job.
Thank you. Well, they're your goals, I hope you like them.
Right. And of course, we probably will at some point revisit those goals. Not now, though. Just so you know, it's not on your plate in the near future. But we should probably talk about that after, you know, by spring. We should probably put that on agenda.
How close we've gotten.
Exactly, you know, I think it's always a good idea. It's been a year and a half, so we should probably just review where we've come, you know, and where we, if we feel like we're heading in the right direction, if there's something we need to update. So we can do that during the summer again or something. Okay, well, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll move right on. I'm assuming this isn't going to be a very long meeting tonight anyway, so let's go right ahead to the superintendent. And all of you got your report emailed to you, I'm assuming?
I think we have two hard copies. Anybody want one? Raise your hands.
This is the new monthly report coming out of the superintendent's office for everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't think there's anything I need to particularly call your attention to. Certainly, for the audience on the TV there, we certainly take pride in Vermont being the second highest completion rate in the country for completion of high school at 87 percent. Sharing that honor with the great state of Wisconsin. So that's all to the credit of boards like yourselves and others across the state. I think other than that, I don't have anything to call your attention to. The RED study next meeting will be on the 16th of January, the Regional Education District Study. I know that the Townsend School Board last night voted to support the articles and move forward. And I've yet to meet with Jamaica or Brooklyn New Haven. Brooklyn New Haven, I think both are meeting next week. We'll see if they are...
Is it next week? I thought the 20th for New Brook, is that next week? Oh goodness, is that already next week?
Yeah.
I regret to inform you that you better get going on holiday spirit. I don't even hear them.
I can't keep track of the days. That is next week, isn't it?
All right.
So it's next Thursday for New Haven, Brooklyn, and then next? What day is it for Jamaica?
Jamaica's on Tuesday, I think so.
Yeah. So you'll be at that one, I'm assuming?
You gonna try to be there, right? Okay. Great. And I think each town will make a different decision about how many meetings or what meetings to have prior to the 16th of January. And Townsend is gonna wait and see what the study committee comes up with.
Okay, after the next time we meet.
Right, because no one was anxious to schedule a meeting before the holiday. You know, another meeting.
And just for clarification, in case everybody doesn't, we didn't report at the last meeting, this is where we're taking back information to our local boards from the RED committee and having a conversation at that level to talk about next steps.
Yeah, and particularly to check the articles, latest edition on the Regional Education District website, study committee website. And, you know, there'll be a few corrections probably and edits when we meet again on the 16th. But it's possible that the study committee, if they're inclined to do so, will send them on at that point to the State Board of Education for their approval. And that would lead to a vote sometime in the future on the issue of forming a regional education district, K through 12.
And so if you can make it to your meeting, I know Bruce will go, and Joe, I don't know if he were there or not for yours, but feel free bombing and Jay, you know, and Patty. Wyndham's still not involved, but the other board members, feel free to go to your meeting and share your thoughts, because I think the gray's perspective is a great one to have. Hi, Jeremy. A great one to have at the local level on governance, because we operate in a similar fashion, so.
Any questions more on that? So I do have something to share with you. This requires no action tonight, but, you know, I mentioned before in the report that we have to review or revise an updated bullying policy. This is by recent legislative action. The official deadline, I think, for approving was January 1st. We're not gonna make that, but you certainly want to give your board members an opportunity to review this model language. And then Dren and I will go over it and adjust what we recommend for your consideration, and then you can add your edits or comments in our January meeting. We'll warn it, and then hopefully adopt the following meeting. You could take that with you for the holidays as something to distract you from other pressing matters. The other thing is that I do know that we ordinarily vote on the warning, the warning for your annual meeting. It may seem early, but the annual meeting is the first Tuesday in February. You need to have that posted by January 4th, Frank informs me, I think, to make the 30-day, 30 to 40-day window before your annual meeting. And I have found on my computer the audio.
Can I do it?
Yes, from 2012. So we can edit from that and make sure that we have it right.
I just completed the edits.
Oh, you completed it, okay, fine.
Okay, so if we can actually, it would be helpful if we could print it. I don't know.
Sure.
He has a chance to print it.
If you could do that, that would help the board, I think, when we get to that point in the agenda. Because there's two different... So there's the Australian ballot, there's the annual meeting, the Australian ballot. Okay.
We obviously have to vote on a budget, a proposed budget number, before we can complete that. Questions about process? All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. So Frank, do you have a report?
I do. Well, my report was going to be under the next part of the agenda, under the budget review.
I assumed that, but I didn't know if there was anything else here.
Nothing in addition.
Okay, questions for Frank that don't relate to budget? Because we're going to that next. If not, we're moving on to budget. Look at how fast we're going. Okay. From my understanding is that the budget has not changed. Am I right from the last meeting?
That's right, that's right.
So we'll hand it over to you.
We have some information from the DOE though that...
Right, that we were waiting on, yeah, great.
Would you like me to hand that out?
That would be great if you could do that.
Okay. You just take, there's two sheets. Take one of each, there's a graph and a data sheet. And then, does anyone need a copy of the budget from last meeting?
I might need to get one.
I'll take one.
Sure. There's a budget, one for Bruce. Trying to get an O.
Sure. The one is 12 dated 12-4.
12-4.
If somebody's missed one. Okay. So this is still going around, but Frank, you can...
Okay, Tara? Yes. All right, so remember at our last meeting on the 4th of December, we had $6,811,076 proposed by a $258,000 increase, or 3.9 percent on the expenses. And the funding on that first page of the budget from last... There's been a bit of a shift from the tuition revenue you see declining, which means the local tax rate and other governmental income has to go up in order to offset that change. And then on page three, we looked at the revenue sources in detail, and you can see the changes noted in the different sources. You know, local, down 3.1. State reimbursements up 5.2. And the sub-grants were up 6 percent, but the whole thing nets out to 3.9. Do you want a copy? Can you have something? Okay, so the new information that we received since our last meeting is this data sheet that I've handed out. There are several assumptions that the legislature and the governor provide to us, to the Department of Education. They don't become final until the legislature adjourns, but these assumptions are all part of setting the tax rate. And as you recall, several of them we don't control, but they have direct effects on the calculation of the tax rate. So this is also a document that I've passed out, a three-year comparisons document that the legislature requires us to publish in our annual report. So it might look familiar to you. It's hard to read, though, it's their format. It's a lot of numbers, a lot of tiny numbers. But it's basically the derivation of the tax rate. So the new numbers that we have received are on line 13, equalized students, 318.41. You can see that's down from the prior year of 331.64. And this is a problem that many schools struggle with in the state of Vermont. Win Hall, as you probably recall, Stephen and I reporting and reading in the newspaper last year, had this divergence between future enrollment growth, but a funding formula looks at a trailing average. We have that problem this year in that we've built a budget around a bit of an increase in projected enrollment for next year, a class of 75. So we've put in enough resources for 75 students in the seventh grade. But the DOE statistics, as you can see, are looking at a trailing average. And that creates a problem for all schools in that situation. They're not reflecting the higher numbers that we're budgeting for at this point, because they have this trailing average. So this doesn't do anything to the proposed budget expenses, up 3.9 percent, but it does a lot to a projected tax rate, because the school funding formula is simply spending divided by students. It's a factor, I can, I'll show you that number on this page. And that factor is multiplied times a statewide benchmark tax rate, and that's what we pay. So if we're budgeting for more students, but the DOE is giving us numbers from a trailing average, that's a gap, and the tax rate will go up as a consequence. I sort of forewarned you of this, you know, the last couple of meetings. So for you to understand it, there's only about three numbers to look at here. It's our spending, that's the first number, the line one. $6,811, okay, that's right off the document that we've reviewed. We take away tuition revenue and other types of grants. That's on line nine, $1,938. So you can see, take spending minus revenues, we get net spending. That's on line 12. You divide that number by the number of students we have that are on line 13, and you get this cost per student. It's this equalized net education cost per student. $15,303. That compares to the prior year of $14,100. And here's the last calculation. You just take another dollar number, an index that we've been waiting for from the governor. That is on line 19, but they love to throw in the superfine print on that. There's a very small number underneath line 19. It's $8,915. And I don't have glasses, I can still read that, just so some people are concerned about my vision.
Can we put that in a minute?
I can read it without my glasses.
But what that means is, so there you're done. You're done with your tax rate calculation. It's, so it's $15,303 divided by that number that they give us, $8,915. And that's this factor, 171.6. Or we're 171 percent higher than what they call a base education spending index. And they give us that number. We plan for the $15,303. They give us that index. Everybody in the state divides their spending by that index. And then you multiply that times whatever the governor or the legislature says the statewide property tax will be. At this point, the governor's recommending 92 cents. So there you go. You take your 92 cents times your dollar, your 171 factor, 1.71 is the factor. And our tax rate would be $1.579. And that compares to a current tax rate at the high school of $1.439. The difference is up 9.8 percent. And we haven't seen one of those increases in a long time. There's still a number of things that we don't know that will likely change that number. The biggest one is the common level of appraisal. And a union high school actually doesn't have a CLA, because we are represented by five towns. But each one of your towns has a CLA, of course. And we don't know that number. We won't know that till probably January 3rd or 4th, something like that. That's when your listers have submitted all of your real estate transactions to the tax department. Property valuation and review tax department sends it back to your select board, your grand list, and then they send it to us. Now, last year, after the Irene, you know, Jamaica's CLA went from about 100 percent, meaning taxes F values were about its market value the prior year, to 115 percent in one year, which is unprecedented. But because of that enormous increase in the CLA, their effective tax rate dropped about 15 percent. So if, that's not gonna happen again, but I'm just saying that the variation in the CLA is large, and it can have a very big effect on this up or down. So it's anyone's guess in your town if you're seeing for sale signs on the road, and people are either selling quickly or not, and are they getting more than they're asking for or not? That's what affects the ceiling.
Or more than their assessed value is.
That's what affects the ceiling. Yep, more than the assessed value, yeah. So I don't bother to predict that. I have no insight in what that number will be, but I'm saying that this will change. The other important thing to keep in mind is that our taxpayers will only get approximately half of this number, because the state takes a weighted average of school tax rates when you're in a union. And so they'll take whatever proportion that New Brook is of the K-12, New Brook population, and they'll say, well, if their tax rate is $1.40, then they're gonna pay about half of that. And our tax rate's $1.60, $1.579. We're gonna take the half of that, and you're gonna put those two together. So there's another variation that we will sort through, I sort through, as we start getting local budgets voted on. At this point, I don't think any of the local budgets are finalized. New Brook hasn't met yet for a draft budget. So in years past, what's happened is elementary budgets have gone up quite a bit, and tax rates have been up quite a bit. But when you look at this three-year comparison, you see the high school budget in 2011 was $6,331, and then it was $6,328 less than. We actually declined in '12. And then in '13, we were still relatively flat, but there was an increase, but over a two-year period, it wasn't that significant. My point is, is that the high school tax rate mitigated some of the increases that we were seeing at the elementary. So even if they had a 5 percent increase and we had a 1 percent, you know, the voter was only seeing, you know, 3 percent. Unfortunately, the preliminary drafts, that's not the case at the elementary level either. Their budgets are up. So this is gonna be a new territory, I think, for the region.
Townsend, preliminary approval for a 6.7 increase last night. They'll have a final vote on it in January meeting.
Was that over double digits last?
Their previous, that required some serious cuts in personnel to get to 6.7. Was it 11.8 or 10.8, somewhere around that? And anyway, I think the budgets are, is Wardsboro up or near around that? I think Wardsboro's up around the double digits. And Jamaica, I can't recall what they're...
They're up about 4 percent.
4. Anyway, various...
Is it healthcare? What's driving, what's the deal?
My tip is special education costs. That's the, but healthcare is definitely a large impact at 12.8 percent.
And in the previous year, we were paying nothing additional for personnel. I mean, virtually nothing, because we had a zero settlement, entered agreement for 0 percent.
Fiscal year 12, right.
Fiscal year 12. So that's another thing that, obviously, we're gonna ratify a contract tonight, and we expect and have in the budget the amount of money to cover those agreements. Students have a big effect on the income and on what the tax rate is, but expenses are largely driven by students as well.
318.41 is much lower than we hoped, put it that way. When you say students.
Yes, well, and at the elementary schools, it can vary quite a bit. Jamaica and Wardborough trade at 10 students, apparently, not really. But, you know, one is down 10, and the other one's up 10. And that can have quite an effect when you have 60 or 7 students.
That's thrown our equalized...
So that, you know, that's what Frank is pointing out. When the local school board goes to the annual meeting, they, you know, when people ask, well, how much we paying for the schools? It's a K through 12 question. And, you know, it's gonna be a challenge this year.
Yeah, it is.
One thing I just, I also want to note that is, on this document that we're required to include in our annual reports, this, I would think, is a worst-case scenario. There's another set of guidelines that the governor is not recommending, but it would be the law, if they don't change the law. And those are the, those are those statistics that are on the fine print area, the line 19. And so it's possible that that $8,915 will get revised up, and that would help us, you know, because if you're dividing our number by a larger number, the percent factor, 171, gets smaller. But on the other hand, it's possible that that 92 cents will be higher than what I've got in here. And if that happens, that would be bad, because then we're taking our factor and multiplying it times a larger number. It's a larger increase, so...
There is some pressure on to not do that, you know, the tax rate, and to increase the per pupil.
Yeah. So another just point of reference is that because the tax rate this year is .89, you know, 89 cents, and the proposal for the governor is 92 cents, that in itself is a 3.4 percent increase in taxes. So if we did absolutely nothing, you'd have a 3.4 percent. So you're starting out with that. And that gets mitigated if they increase this base ed spending amount, that $8,915. But at this point, they haven't really mitigated that. So that's why we are looking at these high numbers. I mean, there's a lot of variables there. The biggest variable is our enrollment going from 331 down to 318. And that proportion of a drop in enrollment, we did not follow with a drop in spending. So if we had a drop spending proportionally to that degree, we'd still have this 3.4 percent increase in taxes. we'd still have this three-point-four percent increase in taxes, but it wouldn't be nine percent.
Just to be specific with that law, if we were following the law, it would go to ninety-one-fifty-one, nine thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-one. That's according to Mary Peterson, our Commissioner of Department of Taxes, in a letter to all the, actually, it's going to the Speaker Smith and the pro temp Campbell. So, but it was shared with the boards and the superdenits.
And if we did that, we'd be a six-point-nine percent tax rate instead of a nine-point-eight. So you can see how important these numbers are.
So it sounds like these numbers are still a little bit fluid, right?
They are, but generally when the numbers, these...
Always until the legislature votes.
Yep, and the numbers that I'm using are right in the middle. And generally, they've been pretty accurate. The middle road.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think there'll be any huge swing either way. But they're always fluid until the legislature votes. And that could be as late as May.
Right, and then, of course, we will know the CLA in January.
Yeah.
And it's hard to imagine that the CLAs would be declining or meaning property values are accelerating. It's hard to see any evidence of that, that you just don't know.
No, because Brookline had that kind of issue happen last year, where they had a sale or two that bumped it.
They did, one house.
Yeah. And so that can happen in any one of our towns. So we just, unless one of us, our listers, are aware in our own town, we really won't know until that report comes out in January.
So the other document I handed out, as you can see, it's just a graphical version of the data that was already in your budget package. And so nothing really new, just a line that graphs the data that was included in the budget document.
So Frank, this numbers, are these, is it across the state for high schools? I guess, is it as simple as that eighty-nine-fifteen is what the state says you should spend?
No, no. The eighty-nine-fifteen is a, I think, it's a number that goes back nineteen ninety-seven. And it was the legislature saying, we're going to create an equalization formula. We know, you know, in today's dollars, we needed a one-point-two billion in funding for public education K-12. And they've got a few variables that formulate a revenue stream and a tax rate. So it used to be as simple as, well, you need to spend one-point-two billion, and your tax, and your grand list in the state is about a billion, so let's set the tax rate at one-point-two. Well, so that's the big picture. But then they threw in a couple of denominators and numerators in between that simple equation. And that eighty-nine-fifteen, my understanding is it came in as a balancing mechanism. Really had nothing to do with what is the cost of an adequate education.
It's not really a straight cost.
It was a way to say, we know that we've made these commitments to public education, and we know the grand list is this amount. And now, back then, they wanted to start with, I think, a dollar-ten was the statewide property tax. They just wanted that thing to stick to the wall. And then they came in with this eighty-nine, about the equivalent of eighty-nine-fifteen. And it was initially problematic because some towns were spending that amount, and their tax rate was a dollar or a dollar-ten.
Right, right.
And most towns were spending twenty to thirty percent more than that, which is average, you know, normal. So then, you know, there was a discussion ten years ago, well, geez, you know, if some towns can do this for that number, why can't all towns do it? And then you have to start talking about the proportion of specialized students in your school, the proportion of students with poverty and needing remedial services and support, and a variety of things that change learning circumstances.
Proportion of experienced staff versus new staff.
Okay.
You know, in a small school with six teachers, you know, that can have quite an effect on your personnel costs. And certainly, we want to retain quality, experienced teachers, so. It, just referring back to this letter, that one reality the legislature faces is they've frozen the per base, base per pupil spending at eighty-five-forty-four for, through 2012, I mean, it was for three years. So there's that pent-up, you know, trying to catch up with inflation. And that's where they would get to ninety-one-fifty-one. But probably that's not going to happen. They're going to end up at this eighty-nine-fifteen.
Yeah.
It was a little higher than eighty, it was eighty-seven-twenty-three in the year we're in now.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, it said, but they're still trying to cut that.
They had frozen it for a couple of years at least before that. I know, I remember they did that. There was some pressure on to raise it. They did last year.
And it's essentially an override of the law that they knew needed to be in place in order to keep funding relatively stable. But they overrode it for a variety of reasons, mostly economic. Not because the need has changed.
Tough, you know, this whole country had a few tough years there.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why, as you know, Leland and Gray had a budget that was down from a prior year, and we had successive, you know, flat line budgets.
Okay, other questions or comments? This was what you were waiting for? From last meeting to this one. Okay, so Frank, one quick question. I know you don't know the future that you can't look at numbers on. But, I mean, we're taking a pretty big dive here. Are this, elementary schools predicting continuing decline in enrollment yet themselves? Do you know?
No, at this point, they...
So we're not actually looking at seeing that, maybe not even go down. The graph is what I'm talking about.
That's a scary looking graph.
Yeah, it is. It has been.
It seems that the worst-case scenario for grade level size at Leland and Gray would bring us all the way back to the early seventies, which is a class size of about fifty. And, you know, six times fifty is three hundred kids. So I think that's probably the smallest that we would see. But there's no indication that we're going to get all the way down there.
Okay. And so what you said just now was that we're not seeing deeply declining enrollments in elementary anymore. They've had that.
Most of them. There's definitely variation from one to another. But like Jamaica knows that they've dropped twenty percent, twenty-five percent in a couple, three years. Townsend was pretty stable for a while, while Jamaica was dropping like crazy. But then Townsend started to drop in the last year or two. Jamaica's actually up twenty percent. Small numbers, so there's, you know, so they're actually moving up a little bit. New Brook and Brookline has actually increased enrollment from mostly new families, not anything that we could have predicted. But now we're seeing Wardsboro drop substantially in the elementary. And Wyndham has been pretty steady at...
Fifteen.
Yep.
Nineteen.
Wow.
That includes pre-K.
When my kids were there, it was like thirty-five.
Yes, yeah, I know.
And Dover, just to review everybody else, every other town in the SU of Dover and Marlborough were pretty, holding pretty steady. At around eighty, eighty and ninety, eighty-eight and ninety-four or something.
They had their declines as well, though, in the past.
Yeah.
Do you want another set of these for Mike? Oh, did you get one? Okay, well, yeah, we still have one.
Yeah.
Hi, Mike.
Sorry. Ninety.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, I do. Mike, did you have a copy of the budget also, or do you have that?
Is it different?
He probably needs the budget.
No, it's not.
You have it.
No, it's probably the same.
Okay.
Twelve-four is still a group.
Yeah.
Hey, Frank, I think I know what the answer's going to be, but how does this put us for that second vote on the budget?
We're happy to find out that we are not subject to this type of vote. Initially, I thought we were, but...
How do I see that on this?
There's a document that I would have shared with you. I can share it with you. I do have it if you want to take a peek at it.
Yeah.
Let me give it to you. It's a document that the DOE develops. And, pass that over to Frank. Paul? And it's a pretty simple formula that says, here are the requirements of the law that says the factors you have to compare. And the reason why we're not subject to it is because the law allows you to use the higher of your current enrollment or your future enrollment, which is an interesting...
So they're saying go back. This says go either way.
Well, that one says go either way, yeah. So if we had to use three-eighteen, boom, we'd be...
That's what I figured. When I saw that, I thought the answer was definitively yes.
So did I. But I did call the guy that Brad James at the DOE that develops that. He interprets the law, basically.
Make sure they were not missing anything.
Yeah. And he confirmed that that is the correct interpretation of the law.
But it does mean that, you know, we will have to be facing that lower number included in that next year. We won't have as much to pull from next year, depending on what our enrollment turns out to be next year.
Well, the other good news related to that is that law is scheduled to sunset at the end of '14.
It is. It is. And there's an awful lot of push to not, not keep going with that two-vote.
Yeah.
Been a lot of negative on the two-vote.
I was looking for some good news.
Well, you've got some. Good job. I think we'd be looking at maybe a slightly revised budget if we had triggered that. Because for us to vote Australian ballot and to explain the two-vote would have been a real challenge. Right, and I don't know if it's even possible to explain the two-vote thing. I mean, you know, you only can tell those who are coming to meetings and who are listening or reading what we nail out. But that may not be reaching everybody who walks in the voting booth and is confused over two-vote ballot. So this is good.
This is good. The other thing I should mention is...
This is good for our kids. I'm sorry if I need to interrupt, but that's an important piece. But this is good because the budget that was, you know, shared with us, proposed to us, that we are going to hopefully vote on tonight, was based on what we said, what our students need to, for an adequate, for a good education here at Leland and Gray. So this is good for our kids that we're able to not slash at least yet. We can keep programs. I mean, that's the point. If we are not competitive and are not able to continue to fund these programs, we're going to be struggling in the future to keep our enrollment up. Because we are competing with some tough, tough market out there. So I'm sorry to be interrupted, but I think it's really important to stay focused on the students' needs.
So another statistic that isn't representative of student need, but it is good news in that the state has created a cost containment incentive for school boards. It's this excess spending threshold per equalized pupil. And I don't know if it's on this thing here or not. Did we see this?
It is, seventeen.
Line seventeen, yeah. So that says, you see the small print, fifteen thousand four fifty-six?
Right.
Okay? That is the penalty threshold. So every dollar you spend over that per student, you are taxed at a double.
Double the amount.
Double the rate. And you see our number is less than that. And if you look over the prior years, you can see that we have been under that, you know, consistently, and by a similar margin. So the margin is not that different that we are as a proportion.
That's interesting.
And that number also is subject to change. They've given us the warning. They set that, the state sets that. And that number is a hundred and twenty-five percent over the average spending per student in the state.
Now, I don't think any school district in Wyndham Central has triggered the two-vote. Am I right? But they have gone over the threshold in this...
That's right. Our non-operating towns would have. Stratton and Windholt would have. But there was amendment to the law that says if you don't operate a school, you can set a, set your tuition rate and still be exempt.
What is the threshold to the average again? It's not a hundred percent, it's almost?
One-twenty-five.
One-twenty-five.
Yeah.
One-twenty-five percent.
So say if all the schools decided not to be part of the supervisory union, so they don't have a school.
They'd have a hard time doing that, but...
But then they wouldn't be married to that threshold thing. Is that how that goes?
They would still have an elementary school, though.
Yeah, if they go over on their elementary school, but they only have those grades.
Like it goes over regardless if you have a school at all.
Yeah, that's right. They still hold you. So if you're a Windholt or a Stratton, you're exempt from the two-vote requirement. But you're still subject to the threshold penalty.
Penalty for taxes.
No relief. Yeah.
So it's the two-vote thing?
That's right. The only relief is the two-vote.
All right. Other comments or questions?
Good explanations, Frank.
Good question.
Just remind the public, we're all part of the solution.
Exactly.
Just got to keep working on it with the legislature.
Okay, get them on board.
Okay. So if there's no other comments or questions?
I make a motion.
Yes.
Just say when you make that motion.
You've just got to state the amount of expenditure on the first page. No, the first page of the budget.
It's the six million eleven.
I make a motion that we adopt.
Approve.
Approve the proposed budget for 2014 in the amount of six million eight-hundred-eleven-thousand-and-seventy-six dollars.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second all around the room. Okay, so it's back open for discussion, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. So I think Frank's going to go up and, is he going up to print the warning? So he'll print out the warning for us, where you all remember there's two. Two separate warnings that we have to vote on. One will be for the annual meeting, which is on February third or fourth or something. And we'll know in a minute because I don't have my calendar out. But, and then the second one is for our Australian ballot, which is, unless we change it, typically the day after our annual meeting, so.
Does anybody want to give the other?
Yes, if somebody hasn't done them, we should.
Yeah.
And in fact, I don't know if there's anything else from the rest of you guys or the administration, but I wanted to wait till Frank comes back down to mention about the auditor. It has to be the people who have, who reviewed them before. Though part of the auditor piece, actually, one of the questions they asked was, you know, do we make sure that people who are reviewing pay orders, bills and pay orders have had training to do it? And I said, yeah, we, like Patty came in and sat down with another board member who's done them in the past. And we always try to link an experienced board member doing it with someone who's not. So feel free to jump in anytime, John, to learn how. I know you're just dying to...
Just look over his shoulder there.
I know you're dying to go.
Bama will bring you one.
Those, the ones that are skewed were ones I couldn't find on the list.
Yeah. Okay. So... So we can actually move on. Bills and payers, we can't do yet. Consent agenda, we can do.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, then move to approve the consent agenda. Since you did, we really don't need to make a motion in a second. But since you did make a motion, is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, Joe seconded it. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. You'll remember that consent agenda is typically approved by consent and is not open for discussion unless someone takes out of, the item, any item out of the consent agenda to discuss.
So you, yeah, you were speculating about the February 2013. Our meeting is on the second Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month. Am I correct?
It is.
That's, no, I'm talking about the annual meeting.
The annual meeting is the first Tuesday.
It's the fifth.
Yep.
And then we would vote by Australian ballot on the sixth.
That's right.
And that means you should schedule your calendars to be available. I mean, there'll be usually an information meeting, usually the preceding Tuesday.
And we should talk about that too. Again, I think I brought it up at the last meeting, but I will not be here that Tuesday.
That's the twenty-ninth, right?
I don't get it.
And we don't, I mean, there's nothing but sacred about that particular day, but you have to have an information meeting within a ten-day window prior to the budget vote, isn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think your night before will cover.
And I don't know what your calendar looks like. And I, you know, I certainly am perfectly fine with the rest of you holding that information meeting without me. But if you want me there, we're going to have to do, I mean, I am definitely not going to be here on the twenty-ninth. It's even going to be if.
So I guess Emily and I will discuss alternatives if we need them, but you can decide that in January.
But it should be, yeah, it should be your decision. And the quicker we decide it, the better. And if you guys are comfortable with, with holding it without me, we'll stay on the Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. If you would rather I were there, we should be looking at dates because Stephen's calendar is so full.
Oh, always available. Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what, what day are you thinking of?
Well, I, I mean.
When are you available?
I probably could be back for the thirtieth or the thirty-first. I'd fly back on the morning of the thirtieth, I believe.
The thirty-first.
I'm crossing my fingers that I'm not doing a train. Just a matter of what's more expensive. Last year it was the same price to go on the train or the plane, so I flew.
Well, I suggest you hold out the thirty-first as well then. Your calendars. And I have to see about my other information meetings with the other.
Right, the only other, you know, because we vote a month earlier than, because we vote a month earlier than everybody else. No one will be holding their information meetings unless, unless Newbrook does. But theirs is a week later than ours typically, so.
Saturday.
Right. And I think we want to just double check on the law about the ten-day window, just to make sure.
Okay. All right, we'll get back to you about that.
Okay. So I, I will go ahead and mention, even though Frank's not back yet, I did want to say this in front of him, but I'll just tell him. Or he can watch it on TV.
There we go.
We, I had a phone call last week from, a very routine, and I've done this before, from our auditor Sullivan Powers, who are completing the audit. Frank will tell us when he gets back in the room whether, and she told me he, they were supposed to have information to Leighton and Gray by now on their audit that they have pretty much completed, but she was just waiting to get an approval from her boss. And she thought maybe it would be here by the end of the day, but she didn't think it was going to be so odd. Frank will tell us whether she did get it to him or not. But anyway, this is a routine. And it's mostly all of the, the phone call to a board member. They typically will try to reach the chair. And since they were able to reach me, I'm the one who had the pleasure of speaking to Sullivan Powers. And it was, I believe it's Melissa Rogers.
Yeah.
A very nice young woman. And I think I've actually spoken to her in the past. But anyway, it was, it's basically about fraud, you know, concerns. And this is something they do with every school district and municipality that they deal with, which is a lot of them. And so a lot of the questions were along the line of how, you know, our, the way we approve our bills and pay orders and all that. We went through quite a number of things back and forth. And honestly, it appeared to me that we were, we really are a great example of a board who's doing things right. Because the questions she would ask me, you know, like this, we do review bills and payers, we do the meetings, we do the checks and balances that we do here are, you know, obviously beyond what they expect. And of course, we have our fraud prevention policies and our rescue policies. We keep, you know, we have all of that in place and up to date, which is great. So the only thing, and this was a part of my wait for Frank, but it's the piece that he has mentioned to us and it has been in our audit every year. The only thing they bring up, and they bring this up every single year, is that student activities account. And they always recommend that if there's any way, when there's cash being handled, for example, gate receipts, bake sales, car washes, bottle drives, those kinds of things where there's actual cash involved, to, they like to see more paper connected to it. So for example, they were recommending, if you have a bake sale, you would take an inventory of everything at the bake sale first and you'd have that written down on paper and all that. Once she went through the whole process explaining what their recommendation is for this to every school district, not just us, she did also agree that we do have to keep in mind that these are volunteers who are coming in to help us and they recognize that and understand that we don't want to lose our volunteers either as well. And since, you know, all the controls within our school are perfectly fine, she was very clear about that. But she was just a little, they were just making this recommendation, and Frank can speak to it again as well. And so I, we'll, we'll go back to Frank and let him say whatever he wants to say. But I, I do think it's kind of a balancing act, and she did recognize that as she was telling me that. But other than that, it was a very, very positive conversation I had with Melissa. And there, it's, it's amazing. All these years I've been on the school board and wasn't until the last four or five years where I started getting phone calls from the auditors as they were doing them. And it's all about fraud.
Part of the height, well, it's part of the heightened obligation the auditors have.
Exactly.
They interview me individually as well and confidentially if I have any reason to believe anything is not right. But there's specific questions, just like the ones you have. And since we have nine audits this summer, we'll have another nine interviews about that. But, you know, that's.
We're back to the nine-year, nine in one summer.
That's the way we're asked.
Every third year.
You hear on the news about these people who have been stealing from the town office for years and how are they?
Well, I will explain what, what, what is important and also just to give you a little perspective as board members. What is really unacceptable is if the principal is, you know, approving dispersments, right? And in some cases, there's not adequate, you know, oversight by the board or the superintendent or the CFO. And then what's, what's really enables it to happen is if the, if the principal is also the supervisor and evaluator of the accountant, of the, of the treasurer, not, not the official treasurer of the town, but you know, the person who keeps the books with the school. And accountant, that really is often a combination with the administrative assistant in some small schools. So I'm just, you know, cautioning you about why it's, it's, at least in the school setting, how that can come about. So it makes sense to people why. And so that, now, most of the time, that goes very well. But you can see the conflict when the, when the person, the principal is the person of authority supervising evaluating the position and the person serving as in that capacity, they could work out something, you know, together.
And one of the other things, one of the other things she brought up quite specifically and pointedly was questioning whether anyone on the board does business with the school. Does it get any, you know, so is there conflict going on?
Questions about conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest and that sort of thing. Which I was happy to say that while we do sometimes have to kick board members out of the room when we're, we're discussing negotiations because they may have a family member who's a party to that. But other than that, we don't have that issue around here, so.
So if you're on the board, you can't like be a substitute teacher or something like that?
Correct, you can't be employed.
Is that right?
Nor can your family benefit financially from your connection with us.
I've had board members had to resign.
Yeah.
Just the past two years, we got a couple had to resign because they took a position.
Right. But in fact, that, that's not just true of.
That could have been your case if you'd become an official coach.
I'm just a volunteer.
Yeah, you're just a volunteer, so it's okay.
Come on, wait a minute, I have that Chinese student.
And.
I didn't think so.
And it's the same, you know, it's the same across the board if you. I know we've had board members in Wyndham Central before who won't even do substitute teaching in, in any school in Wyndham Central. They would only do substitute teaching. If they're a board member in Wyndham Central, they would do substitute teaching down at Wyndham Southeast.
Yeah, they could be in a different district.
So that they're in a different district. Frank, I, again, you're going to have to go to the TV to listen to the conversation we had. Just kidding. About, because we couldn't wait for you anymore to discuss the fraud. I mean, the auditor phone call I had, and I'll fill you in afterward. But it was all quite positive. And I, the only, the only thing, and I know it won't be any surprise to you, but the only thing she mentioned to me at the very end after many, many questions and seemed, she seemed to be very satisfied with all of my responses. And things sound very good as they, as they always do and as I would have expected. But she did mention a thing about student activity fund and cash, you know. And in the end of the conversation, she did recognize, like I told everyone else, that, you know, some of these things, like the bake sales, they're volunteers and it's really have to balance the oversight of the cash with your, with your non-volunteers. And if there's any way for us, she gave me quite a number of examples of ways you can try to get more check and balance over things like that. And so that was her only, the only thing she brought to. But she said everyone has the same issue.
Yeah, familiar with the recommendation. And just so you know, the board understood that we also made quite a different internal control requirement if, if, in, in a student activity fund where the activity is completely a liability of the, of the activity.
For example?
So, so with the, with a class trip or the CLIA group, the SAD group, the FBLA group, there, there's, I think there's about forty different of those groups. We keep a fund balance for each activity of revenue and expense and equity. And we require purchase orders and requisitions and approvals and account numbers and all of those standard things. But when it's, when it's.
And she mentioned that and said, those are great. That's, you know, she mentioned that. We do that appropriately.
The difference between that versus our general fund, which is the taxpayer funding the activity, they are accepting the liability for their activity. And we're not a bank. We don't advance the money. We take no risk. But if, if there's an error, the error is going to be within their own activity. It will have no bearing, you know, on our, on our taxpayer. It will have no bearing on any other of our trust funds or our special revenue funds, our grant funds. That's the student activity fund. It's self-contained. So the exposure is different from my point of view to, to the rest of the school. And what we would have to do, we would have to evaluate if they want us to go in with a twenty thousand dollar clerical oversight process that, you know, pays somebody to count every brownie that's cooked.
It's exactly what you suggested.
Just seems a bit away from eating.
Then, well, then the issue is going to be for the, for the student activity. Do they want to invest in that? Because the point is that somebody's got to pay for that. And we're not, we're not going to spend the taxpayer money to do that. So the issue is, just to start off with an activity, if we go down that road all the way, you're, you're dealing with maybe something like three hundred, four hundred dollars just to say, I want to do an activity. Because then we got to bring in the oversight, you know, overhead to it. We haven't gone there. There hasn't been issues around control. If there's a concern about somebody raised five hundred dollars and they look at their account and there's only four hundred, we have a very good track record of who took what responsibility to do what, who's returned what receipt. We do do receipts. We do, as they say, purchase orders and so on. So we have no problem tracking transactions. But, but.
So that includes like, like gate tickets, like for drama? Do they have numbers on the tickets, that sort of thing?
They do have numbers on their tickets, but there again, that's a little different than, than the class trip wants to go to Great Escape or non-educational, you know, pursuit. Gate receipts, like basketball, theater, there is more oversight because the school is providing the facility and we have an interface with the public and there's, there's a little more.
Then she would have less of an issue, I think, than, I wasn't aware we had numbers on our tickets. I've gone to drama performances and never noticed whether there were numbers or not. She asked me that question and I honestly couldn't tell her the answer. If she had known, if I had known that, she would have felt better, I think.
Yeah.
And she was already fine with what she was hearing from me anyway, but I, you know. So we're clearly are doing fine.
Why they focus on it is, is it is the area where most embezzlement occurs.
She talked about cash. Anytime there's green cash, she said.
Yep. And the big issue in Vermont was in, I think it was Proctor a few years ago.
Yeah.
You know, there was an awful situation there. They were, they were running hundreds of thousands of dollars through these accounts. And, you know, we're not, we're not at that.
Their activities?
Yep, a lot of, lot of trips.
Oh, oh, I see, not from fundraising.
Well, a lot of it was fundraising.
For big.
Yeah. Fundraising for trips. It's a big school. You got fifteen hundred students. There's a lot of fundraising that can go on.
Anyway, I thanked her, I, just to close this out, it, it was a very positive conversation, very positive about your office, Frank, and about Leighton and Gray and the way we operate. And I think that was a compliment to you. And I appreciate that, so thank you. And I also thanked her for making sure that that twenty-some-odd thousand dollars we have, we pay for that audit every year is actually, they're, they're falling pretty great, what they feel is right for that. So you have a warning?
Yes.
Warnings?
Yes. Here we go. Here, maybe just take, take one. I'll keep one. There's a few of that way.
Are they all, is it two things there?
He hasn't done the, he hasn't done the ballot yet.
Do we vote on the ballot? We do, we voted on the ballot. Oh, I didn't think of that.
We do. But, but if you have it on there, we can still vote on it. We'll just get the document. We can email the document out to everybody. I think if you've got it on your computer from last year, or I've got it in my, here, I've got it right in there.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't.
I got it in here.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. On that, we're probably just changing, changing like this one, a couple of dates and the amount.
That's right here. Make sure they stick out.
I'll just make a copy of the old one.
So that's what we, this is the piece we would vote. So we just need to update the dates on that one. So, okay. So you updated this one, Frank? Am I right?
I did, yes.
And did we not take off the article seven? Oh, no, that's correct now. Not every year. We already did that, every year thereafter. We removed that already. I just wanted to make sure we removed and did every year thereafter, but we did. Okay. Because that was a direction from the voting public. Okay. Has anybody seen anything that we missed on this? Frank, it looks like you did a good job.
Well, maybe. How about that auditor?
Yeah, I was just going to say, let's make sure, who is auditing right now? And I, do we, do we even have all positions filled?
Peter Lilian thought was nominated last year.
Okay. Donna was a year before. She should still be on, I think. And. Yeah, I got to go back to the minutes. Do you have the minutes?
I'm looking at the minutes.
Did we have a discussion about what we were supposed to look into?
I, I think we were supposed to look into it.
Yeah, there, it's better be in the minutes.
Yeah, do we need it on there?
It's in my notes. It's not in the minutes?
It's not in the minutes. My recollection is that we said if the, if the elected auditors want to provide a petition or a motion.
I do think that was what.
We would entertain that, but the board didn't want to initiate that.
That's right. We did have that conversation. If there's any directions, usually in the minutes. I, we had been given direction to remove and every year thereafter, to look into removing it. And we did that last year.
Yeah, so it's not in the minutes.
Okay. Okay. So Frank, I don't believe that there should be any. So, Frank, I don't believe that there should be any changes in location, am I right on these?
Uh, I don't believe so, yeah.
But the date will be February 6th.
We're working on the ballot now.
2013, 13, 14.
Yeah, 76.
76, is it?
So this is last year's number?
This is last year, so we're changing the dates on these.
And the amount?
And the amount. 11, it would be the 11th of December in the year of 2012, at the bottom.
But I think I've got it here electronic, they could give me the edits.
There they are.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm, I'm right, the February 6th for the Australian ballot?
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah. February 6th for the fifth of the annual meeting. Okay, everybody has looked this over, the only questions will be on, if anybody has any feedback that your voting time is different, you should say that, but I doubt very much they are.
Do we get a say in the voting time?
We do on the Australian ballot one, we state.
No, he says that we have a say, can we get them to open it or not?
No, 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 we don't.
Do you want them to open the polls at 5:00 AM?
You can go right to your town clerk and tell him.
But nothing to do with us here.
We can't, we can't state when they open the polls, they, they are the ones who state when the polls are open. Townsend's always been a little earlier than others, normally, I thought.
Keep going, by the time we got there.
So.
Well, I, I think we'll call from our office to, before we print this for your signature. We'll call from our office to confirm.
So Brookline and Townsend in Newfoundland 9, I thought you guys did it earlier than that in Townsend. I thought you were eight, but maybe you're not. Oh, we should have a lot, that's much, I think it's more than that. I think you can vote absentee a month ahead. So we'll have to double check on that about absentee ballots and make sure that they're in the, in the town clerk's offices. We, we actually provide them with copy, I believe, don't we?
Yes, we do.
So that they don't have to print them out. They're willing to print them out if they run out, they say, most of the time. But we usually give them a stack for people who want to vote absentee. Okay, so we're gonna need motions, two different motions, actually.
I bet I can get into one.
We've done it separately.
I think we probably should do it separately in the past, and it's just, you can read what we did last year. If it's, we didn't read the whole thing, we, we just did a motion to.
Well, last year, we wanted to move to warn the annual meeting with the warning as proposed, and I actually put the whole thing in the minutes.
That's correct.
Do you want me to email you that?
That would be awesome.
Yeah, it would be really helpful, I think, to have that attached to the minutes, actually both of them.
Frank will have to email you the other one.
So you can make that.
Actually, I have both of them as well.
All right, so I'll move to warn the annual meeting as proposed, the 2013 annual meeting as proposed. We'll get the email.
Okay, we'll do that one first, and we'll include the, the actual document in the minutes. And who seconded it?
I'll send it to you.
Someone did, Mike? Okay, Mike seconded that?
I'm already in.
Okay, comments or questions or changes that you can see need to take place to this? Like, I've looked at it, it looks right to me. And did you, Frank, follow through on the auditor piece? Because I'm not sure.
I think we were trying to have rolling through your terms and.
I thought there was a, you looked at the minutes, did we elect only one auditor, or did we elect two?
I just did one.
There's only one in the.
Because I thought there was a resignation. You know what it was, we didn't accept the resignation. He, he thought he resigned, it was Gunther Garvey, and he kind of thought he resigned, but he never really resigned, I think. And so he came and participated, but I'm not sure even now whether he actually resigned or not. They have basically.
You got a letter, I don't have a letter.
I don't have a letter. Although he may have handed us a letter that night, now that I'm thinking about it.
At the annual meeting, or at the, I'm wondering if he did something when they came?
For the information meeting?
No, when we had them here to, it probably is the same night as the informational, when they're on the phone.
Right, right.
Yeah, upstairs, exactly. I should talk to him.
Just peek at the information meeting minutes that night, it would be the week before. January.
I thought he resigned from the floor. Or he had, yeah, he had.
Yeah, it's, it's a little earlier than that, it's the Tuesday before our.
Well, he was the one from the floor.
It's Tuesday before.
Yeah, I have it, but I don't have anything about it, it was just the.
Okay.
That's right.
I mean, I remember him saying.
Which makes perfect sense to me.
Why are we doing this?
Yeah, they are doing it.
Yeah, I remember him saying that too, boy, I wish I had followed through on this before we met tonight. But you know what, we'll just leave it as it is and elect an honor, because it may be his position that's up this year. Because I thought, if you look back to the minutes from the year before, which I can do, we would have elected, who did we elect? Frank, did you tell me?
Lilienthal one time.
Yeah.
Who did we elect Lilienthal last year? Okay, so the year before that, we elected Donna Ketrake, so it's his position that's up anyway, we're good.
There you go.
Okay, so it's his position, so we're fine with the warning the way it is, the way you warned it. Okay? So if there's no other comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Glad that auditor wanted, this, I can stay up night thinking about these things. Auditors and the treasurers and the moderators, okay.
Is Kathy ready for the next one?
Yeah, do, did we do the same thing with the next one?
Yeah, and I, yeah, Patty, I'm too proof of the warning for the Australian ballot. And I, I guess I put the whole thing, I just have one, one long paragraph saying, you know, here, I notified this list of towns, and then just has one article that wraps it up.
That's exactly what it is.
So I put the whole thing in there too.
Yep, and, and on them, they are also including the date of today, the 11th of December in the year of 2012, it'll say for this one.
So I don't know if I put the whole thing in, is that off?
Well, we'll email you what needs to be attached to the minutes. What, what we're, we're looking at what we're, what we're making a motion on, so we'll just make sure we have the exact same thing handed to you, so.
Okay, so move to approve the warning for, for the Australian ballot as submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mike seconded. Any other comments or questions, the changes were made to this, three or four changes. We're gonna leave all the locations and times for the polls the same as they were last year. That's when they're gonna be open? Okay, if nothing else, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you, thank you, Frank.
Okay. Go into executive session for negotiations.
We, we actually, if bills and pay orders are done, we can do it afterward, if they're not. Because.
If there's a question.
We just have two that are gonna leave, so we'll still have the form, we can do it after, okay.
So I should stick her out then?
Um, no, we can, we can. Oh, make her a copy of that.
Oh, yeah, I got the copy right now, then you can just tell me.
If there's any corrections, I can, we can email it to?
Yeah, and just the motion.
Are we, have we reviewed them already? If we've reviewed them all.
I think we're ready to vote.
They're done reviewing, could you grab that picture?
I think you're ready for voting.
Um, the two of you who reviewed minute, the bills and pay orders?
I think there's a summer document there.
Are you all set? Because I can make the motion, we can make the motion.
Just pull that out.
You don't need to worry about the whole.
It looks like we're ready. Okay, so.
It's your annual salary.
Patty, am I right, these are ready to go?
$377.
All right, so we have warrants and payroll, the warrants, in the general fund, again, these numbers are all completely different than they used to be. But anyway, from, dated from, there's, seven general fund warrants dated from 11/14 to 12/11, totaling $173,136.51, and three payroll with cycle number 21, 25, and 26, totaling $228,570.21. Total warrants and payrolls are $393,706.72. Want to make a motion?
Oh, I make a motion that.
Move to approve that.
Move to approve that.
She's got, she's got all the numbers that have, you know. And is there a second, Baumann, normally the people who review it, okay, Baumann's seconded it. All right, any comments or questions, any changes from what I read? Patty, were there any changes or anything, comments, questions, anything you need to report to the board?
No, we don't need to report those to the board.
Okay, great. If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great, thank you guys for reviewing those, I appreciate that. And then you gave that to Tara, okay. So we have a motion, I think, now. Go into executive session, we didn't get a second before, so. Now we have had a, yeah, it's executive session for negotiations. So, Mike, Mike moved in, well, you can do that, he moved, yes, he is. Joe, Joe's taking, Chris has to leave, so Joe's gonna do it. But he's doing your job for you.
Good, don't make any rush.
I'm not doing it well, I'll add the dollars.
Bye, Paul, thank you. And then Joe will email them to you, Tara, that's okay?
And I'll get the warning in the ballot from Stephen and or Frank.
From Stephen and or Frank, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you too, appreciate it. Good night.
You have a leg.
Awesome.
Oh, it's already been, great. You can actually.
Okay, so I didn't make too many calls.
This hasn't changed since we negotiated it, right?
Uh, no, none.
Okay, we, we, we actually haven't voted yet, so before you get moving around, we've got to vote, and then we'll go off camera. So all those in favor, now that, now that the two people who can't be in the room have left, all those in favor of the motion to go into executive session for negotiations, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes, we are in, and you are done. Okay, so we're back in open session, out of executive session, and.
Okay, I will move to ratify the tentative agreement for July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015, and direct the chair to sign on our behalf.
Second.
Okay, so that's the master agreement.
Teacher master agreement.
Teacher master agreement.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and it was moved and seconded? I heard a second.
Mike did, yeah.
Any comments, any questions?
Again, thank you all very much.
Okay, great, thank you, Mark, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes, great, thank you. So our next. Yeah, please turn those back into Stephen, and.
We will get a final copy.
Our next meeting is January 8th. And there's Wyndham Central.
Thank you.
No, why that was so long? Okay, so next meeting is January 8th, anything else? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and have a happy holiday, everyone.
Anyone else have a copy to get them on?